Good evening and welcome to the 5 o'clock Tulsa City Council meeting. You can view this meeting on our Facebook page, Cox Channel 24, or at TGovOnline.org. Assisting the council tonight are Jack Blair, City Attorney Lori Doring, Secretary to the Council, and Brandon Worley, council staff. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please see Brandon. He has some speaker cards that you'll fill out. You have to, you have to fill out one of those cards before the agenda item is actually read. So please join us in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no proclamations or special presentations. People wishing to speak on an agenda item are limited to five minutes total per meeting. Public input is a time for members of the public to provide insight on the agenda item. Due to the meeting format, public input is not a time for a question and answer period. All comments should be relevant to the agenda item and direct to the council. We have this nice little timing mechanism here. It will be green until you get four and a half minutes in, and then it turns yellow
Counselor Bush?
for the last 30 seconds, and then it turns red when you're over time.
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Please keep your comments to five minutes again.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Please keep the podium area, railings, and aisles free from recording devices and tripods. Items 1A through B are approved. Two appointments and reappointments. A, Ms. Lee to the Arts Commission. B, Mr. Frazier to the Ethics Advisory Committee. Recording equipment and accessories, including tripods, must be set up in the media center. C, Ms. Barrows to the Human Rights Commission. And D, Mr. Vaughn to the Greater Tulsa Area African American Affairs Commission. As posted on tonight's agenda, certain items are subject to consideration and possible approval, adoption, denial, amendment, or revision. Do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, we have one speaker, Mr. John Hoffines for 2A through D.
Item 6B has been pulled. 6B is just in first readings, so I doubt that anybody had signed up to speak on that Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
item anyway, because we typically don't take comments on those items.
Well, thank you. How are you?
I'm great.
Good. Peace.
So I call this meeting to order.
Yes, peace.
Please call the roll.
For all the good you are doing, thank you to our Honorable Mayor, Renault Nichols.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Here.
Counselor Archie?
Here.
Counselor Dutton?
Here.
And Council Chairman, Honorable Council Chairman Phil Lakin, and honorable councilors,
Counselor Bellis?
Here.
Counselor Gilbert?
Here.
Counselor Bengal?
Here.
and excellent staff and team and security.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Here.
Counselor Bush?
We're thankful to the citizens of this great city of love, Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Here.
Item 1, receipt and filing of minutes. We have minutes of regular meeting held at 4:00 PM on April 2nd, and B is at 5:00 PM.
It is a joy to be with you on this 30th day of April in the year of our living Lord,
Do we have any speakers?
Jesus Christ, 2025.
We have no speakers.
Any council discussion?
Yes, appointments and reappointments.
Move to approve items 1A and B.
Second.
Yes, Kayla Lee, appointment to the Arts Commission of the City of Tulsa.
Second.
Oh, I think somebody beat you.
Holy Spirit, we welcome you into Tulsa's arts.
Counselor Bengal with a second.
B, Frank Frazier, appointment to the Ethics Advisory Committee, and may the good book
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
be our guide to ethics.
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
C, Anna Barros, appointment to the Human Rights Commission, and may humans still in the womb be given their human right to live. And D, McKeel Vaughn, appointment to the Greater Tulsa Area African American Affairs Commission. African Americans, greatly loved people, and for the decisions this honorable council will be making this evening, God Almighty, we invoke your guidance. May we continue to appreciate our volunteers and employees. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffines. No more speakers, correct?
We have no more speakers.
Okay, and just for the record, Counselor Dr. Wright recused on this entire agenda item. Any council discussion?
Move for approval of 2A through 2D.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Items 2A through D are approved. Are there any commissioners out of those four who are here who would like to say something tonight? Okay, good. Three, public hearings. Public hearing to receive comments from citizens regarding the proposed closing of a portion of public way located at 12 North Cheyenne Avenue requested by Jaime Skipper of Wallace Designs. Is there a motion to enter public hearings?
Move to enter public hearings.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Please call our first speaker.
We have no speakers.
Okay, without objection, we will exit public hearings. Four, mayor's items. Mayor's report on community events, briefing on city activities, city efforts, and new business. You want to say anything about that, or you want to just move on to the mayor's, the budget item? Okay. Okay. And B, mayor's presentation of the City of Tulsa Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Budget and Capital Campaign. Note, per council rules and order of business, public comment will not be taken on this item. Public input will be heard at future public hearings. Mr. Mayor? Good evening.
Good evening. It's good to see you.
Good to have you with us.
Well, thank you, Chairman Lakin, and thank you to all, all the councilors. I've got the opportunity. We've had two of our community conversations so far, lumping in one with the other. I know, I think almost everybody has been to at least one of them, but we have some that haven't yet, and they've been really good events and a great opportunity. I will say that Counselor Bengal, we're going to have to work on your stand-up routine. We're going to have to work on that. Leaves a little bit to be desired, but next time, next time we'll see how it goes. Yeah, that's right. That's right. I'll write for you. I got you covered. Well, it is indeed a pleasure and, and, and great to be here. You know, if you were counting, I will have been mayor 150 days tomorrow, and I know that it may seem like a lot longer to some people, but it's only been 150 days. And over that 150 days, I've had a front row seat to watch in the public servants across this city, working really toward one common goal, and that common goal is serving the residents of our city to the best of their ability. From our teams here at City Hall to the officers, firefighters, and 911 operators that keep us safe, to our crews who clear our streets and make sure that the water that comes into our homes is clean and safe, they are truly what makes the City of Tulsa run at the highest level. I know we have many of our departments here today, and so I do want to thank them for being here, but also thank them for what they do every single day for the city. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the members of the Finance Department and our city administrator, who probably had the hardest job over the last several weeks in getting us here tonight. So thank you to Mike Miller, to Kristi Bazgall, to Jared Moore, and the entire Budget Division team. They were up to a tall task, and they delivered, and I'm very proud of them. And I also want to thank the councilors as we go through this next part of this process for your commitment to making sure that the city is fiscally strong. So tonight's proposal is not flashy. It does not fund a ton of new programs. It doesn't add a bunch of new personnel, and it does not represent every hope and every dream that we have here at the city. But what this budget is, is one that provides the essential services that Tulsans expect from the city. It's one that protects the personnel we have, it hits on our core priorities, and it is a budget that ensures we make progress toward putting ourselves in a balanced and sustainable fiscal position. As we navigate through this period of fiscal challenge, we must embrace it with clarity and purpose. Now's the time to focus, to sharpen our priorities, and direct every available resource toward what matters most, service of the residents of our city. That's why this proposed budget is not about pulling back. It's about investing wisely. It's about placing our trust in programs and partnerships that deliver real and measurable outcomes, and it's about controlling what we can control, our spending. Right now, all the economic predictions tell us that Tulsa's in a position to experience low to moderate growth in 2026. But as I stand here tonight, revenues are tightening, our costs are rising, from inflation to tariffs, people are just generally pulling back their spending just because this is a very cautious time. And over the last several months, as you all read in the paper and other places, you see that our sales tax receipts have come in lower than expected. And while the use taxes performed well in FY '25, the sales tax revenue for FY '25 is now projected to finish just below the original forecast, with FY '26 expected to see only minimal growth. So for the last three years, the City of Tulsa's had record hiring, bringing in 267 new employees. This surge in employment, as you might guess, has significantly increased our costs, but I will say it is delivering services that Tulsans have come to expect. But at this point, with the unique pressures we have and the things that we're facing, we have to now adjust to make sure we are keeping our costs down. It should be noted that these economic pressures aren't unique to Tulsa. Cities all around the country are feeling the pressure of these economic conditions. Earlier this month, the City of Los Angeles proposed 1,600 in personnel cuts to their budget, and Oklahoma City, just down the turnpike, has had a hiring freeze for the majority of this year. All of this on top of recent news about slumping sales tax receipts all across the state of Oklahoma. So Tulsa's not the only city experiencing these challenges, but we're also not backing down on delivering for those whom we serve. So now I want to walk you through this year's proposed budget. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 2026 is $1.117 billion. While this is an increase from fiscal, from fiscal year 2025, it is primarily due to capital projects and $9 million in carryover obligations from last fiscal year. Our expenditures over the last fiscal year actually exceeded our revenues, and this is something we've talked about a little bit at our retreat, and these numbers show us that the city has been in deficit spending, meaning we're having to use unreserved fund balances to offset our everyday operations. And it was a priority for us to ensure that we don't continue that practice moving forward and doing the best we can to decrease that practice. Given these conditions, we knew we had to look for ways to either increase our revenues or reduce our expenses. And so today's focus primarily centers on our general fund, which this year is budgeted at $419 million. As you know, 60% of the general fund goes to public safety, and the other 40% goes to cover other city operations and personnel. In years past, the city has been fortunate to be able to provide much-needed pay raises to our employees, which has helped bring many of those jobs to closer, closer to market rate. And although we don't have a broad, across-the-board pay raise increase in this year's budget due to the financial outlook, we are offsetting employee expenses through an increase in the city's contribution for the employee health insurance plan, an increase in the retirement contributions to the Oklahoma Police Pension and Retirement System. As for our general fund emergency operating reserve, it is being increased from 8.29% to 10%, fully restoring the reserve after the drawdown from the 2023 Father's Day storm. This operating reserve, in addition to the rainy day fund, which is expected to have a fund balance of $28.8 million by the end of FY '26. So this budget is one that reflects our commitment to bringing down the spending in line with our current revenue projections, while at the same time meeting the goals and priorities that we identified together at our retreat. We are ensuring that we continue our focus on housing and homelessness, solidifying our commitment to making Tulsa the safest big city in the country, providing the necessary resources for us to focus on our youth and families, creating, creating an opportunity economy that protects our workforce and our ability to deliver essential services. And we're doing all of this while aiming to finish what we started on the capital side. Of all the issues, the first thing I want to talk about tonight in this budget is the funding for housing and homelessness initiatives. This is a main topic of discussion at our retreat, and it was the focus of the 3H Task Force recommendations, and also the, the, the focus of two executive orders I've signed since being in office. If we want to make a dent in our path to ending homelessness by 2030, we must face these issues with urgency, compassion, and a strong funding commitment, not just in the future, but right now. When I took office, knowing the challenges that faced us, I appointed Jean Bull Mache and Emily Hall to lead on these issues of housing and homelessness. And through our organizational restructure, a collective and dedicated team is working side by side with a laser focus on getting to functional zero homelessness by 2030 and increasing affordable housing in our city. As we work to increase shelter capacity, including, including our winter weather shelter, this budget funds the continuation of approximately $1 million for right-of-way cleanup and an additional $500,000 to continue the Center for Employment Opportunities Crew Site Cleanup Program. This funding is tied to our shared goal of decreasing the number of encampments, improving outcomes for those living on the streets, and beautifying our city. This budget also commits targeted funding for transitional and permanent housing, and it commits the first allocation of the funds from the Third Improve Our Tulsa Capital Package for Housing Initiatives, which totals $75 million over five years. These funds will focus on the needs identified from the Tulsa Housing Strategies, such as a housing grant fund, monies for housing infrastructure, a housing investment fund, and a housing acquisition fund, all priorities reflected in the council resolution you all passed last year. I appreciate the council's leadership and focus on this issue, as well as the partnership we've enjoyed with Council Administrator Sarah Davis over the last several weeks. Tulsans are counting on us to get this right, and we will make good on our collective promise for our constituents. This proposal also allows Development Services to better meet the demand for new housing permits in a timely fashion. There are very few new positions in this budget outside of firefighters and police cadets, but this budget does include funding for two new plans examiner positions to help speed up our permitting process at City Hall and reinitiate the residential fast-track permitting program. We've heard, I think everybody here has heard this over and over again, from the business community about these being needs, and we're acting to empower our partners as they work with us to meet this community challenge of increasing our affordable housing stock and our housing stock overall. Now, I've talked a lot about the desire to make Tulsa the safest big city in the country. I know you share that goal, and we all want to make sure that our public safety teams have the support they need with, with the appropriate resources. That's why, that's why when I came into office, I created the Commissioner of Public Safety position and appointed Laura Roberts, picture way up there, there we go, a 29-year veteran of the Tulsa Police Department. She is the glue to help create a strong, cohesive, and comprehensive approach to public safety, bringing together our fire and police departments, 911, EMTSA, the Tulsa Area Emergency Management Agency, municipal court, and animal services. The Tulsa Police Department budget includes funding for two police academies totaling 55 cadets, and the Fire Department budget includes funding for a class of 24 new firefighters to ensure the department remains fully staffed. It's no secret that recruiting officers continues to be a challenge, so the budget before you continues to fund aggressive recruitment efforts and the additional overtime needed to keep citizens safe. While this budget maintains these necessary services, it represents our shared commitment, answer that, to investing in alternative response models, which pair mental health professionals with our teams in the field to get people the right kind of response for the right kind of situation. The work and support and leadership of the City Council has been critical in our new mental health partnership at the 911 Center, which is already paying dividends by helping those in mental health crisis get the care that they need. Our dedicated team at 911 takes over a million calls a year, and from March 1st to April 16th, our 911 COPE's team handled nearly, handled nearly 1,000 calls and diverted 858 away from public safety resources and two mental health clinicians. That means we are saving lives and we are saving money. It's a huge win for Tulsans, and I cannot even tell you how much this has made an impact with our officers in the field. There's so much more left for us to do, but I'm proud that our city is leading in this area, and I think everybody in the City Council should be commended for your work and effort over the last several years to make it happen. Now, when it comes to another aspect of public safety, I know the impact of stray animals in our community is not lost on anyone here, and the proposal before you today also reflects the reorganization of Tulsa Animal Services into a standalone department. In doing this, we align the department's focus with the broader public safety needs that Tulsans expect in their neighborhoods while providing more spay and neutering options, also prioritizing the safe and humane treatment of our four-legged citizens as well. I'm proud to say that the construction of our new shelter is formally starting in the coming weeks, and as a shameless plug, we're still taking donations to add even more state-of-the-art add-ons to our shelter. And so for those who are interested, you can go to cityatulsa.org/TAS to learn more. To round out our public safety operations, this budget includes funding to move two previously grant-funded positions to the general fund, a municipal court supervisor, and a public defender. These positions are currently staffed and are essential services that need to continue as the grant funds from the American Rescue Plan are set to expire. One thing I think every Tulsa can agree on is our obligation to invest in the next generation. We must do our part to make an impact for our young people. This council has been instrumental in our shared promise of strengthening families and supporting our youth and children here in Tulsa, and this budget funds the continued operations of our newly established Office of Children, Youth, and Families, led by our Deputy Mayor, Crystal Reyes. As we work to put more than 15,000 kids on a pathway to economic mobility, we will also be kicking off the Children's Cabinet next month, getting experts from across this community together as we further engage in this work. This proposed budget also supports families through the financial counseling work of the Financial Empowerment Center. Previously, the Tulsa Financial Empowerment Center was grant-funded, and this budget brings those operations into the general fund, as those grant funds are expiring. I'm proud to report, report to, that up to this point, the Financial Empowerment Center has helped nearly 6,000 people save more than $650,000 and reduced their non-mortgage debt by $2 million. So from economic empowerment to economic development, we must invest in our future, and if we want to compete on international level, we, we have to be fully committed to doing so. With that in mind, we are providing capital funding of nearly $60 million over four years that will provide for wastewater and other infrastructure improvements that are necessary to support, to spur economic developments within the city. As part of this process, we have identified priority lift station improvements to the Hakee Creek Service Area and the Tulsa International Airport to support new growth. We've also identified infrastructure improvements to support downtown infill development. We've also identified the need for service expansion out east, including investments being made at the Fair Oaks property. We are also looking to replace old city infrastructure in North Tulsa, including our work to usher in the next phases of the Kirkpatrick Heights Master Plan and bring about more economic opportunity to the Greenwood District. When it's all said and done, the investments we make here today are paving the way for more economic activity, more industry, commercial developments, and ultimately more housing of all types to support our growing economy and workforce. We are making sure that the resources our citizens invest reaps a return, and we are focused on maximizing that return on investment for the Tulsa taxpayer. When it comes to celebrating our current assets, as the capital of Route 66, Tulsa will be celebrating the Route 66 Centennial in May of next year, and to meet our continued economic development goals that we set out during the retreat, one-time funding is being provided from the Vision 2025 Sales, 2025 Sales Tax that will help support the planning, mark, and marketing activities around the celebration that will provide an economic boost to the city. Counselor Bengal, there you go. As we look ahead to the centennial, we remind ourselves that capitalizing on the greatness of our city is not limited to one celebration. Currently, our city is missing out on major events to larger cities that have a convention center hotel, and it's time we step up to the plate. I'm proud of our partnership with the Tulsa Chamber and so many visionary leader, so many visionary citizens that are making this a reality. Now, the road toward our new $400 million anchor hotel has started through the release of the request for proposals, and our team is looking forward to reviewing the submittals that are due back at the end of June. To make way for the hotel, we are also beginning the task of moving our police and fire headquarters along with our Mingle Valley Division to the new Public Safety Center by 2027. No doubt, and I think about this all the time, we're on a pretty tight timeline, but we will move quickly to ensure Tulsa capitalizes on this catalytic, on this catalytic economic opportunity and have state-of-the-art facilities for those who protect us every day. When I took office, I vowed to get us out of the courtroom as we work to repair our relationships with our tribal nations. As the largest city in America wholly situated within Indian reservation, within Indian reservations, I believe it's critical that we lean into our partnerships with those who inhabited our city before it was a city. Over the last 150 days, we have demonstrated that we can proudly stand for tribal sovereignty while also ensuring that our community is safe. I can't underscore enough what's possible when we have partnerships in place with our tribal nations. Our legal department, along with our city's First Director of Tribal Policy and Partnerships, are leading us into a new era of collaboration with tribes grounded in a trust-based are making this a reality. Now, the road toward our new $400 million anchor hotel has started through the release of the request for proposals, and our team is looking forward to reviewing the submittals that are due back at the end of June. To make way for the hotel, we are also beginning the task of moving our police and fire headquarters along with our Mingle Valley Division to the new Public Safety Center by 2027. No doubt, and I think about this all the time, we're on a pretty tight timeline, but we will move quickly to ensure Tulsa capitalizes on this catalytic economic opportunity and have state-of-the-art facilities for those who protect us every day. When I took office, I vowed to get us out of the courtroom as we work to repair our relationships with our tribal nations. As the largest city in America wholly situated within Indian reservations, I believe it's critical that we lean into our partnerships with those who inhabited our city before it was a city. Over the last 150 days, we have demonstrated that we can proudly stand for tribal sovereignty while also ensuring that our community is safe. I can't underscore enough what's possible when we have partnerships in place with our tribal nations. Our legal department, along with our city's First Director of Tribal Policy and Partnerships, are leading us into a new era of collaboration with tribes grounded in a trust-based partnership that will ensure Tulsa is both safe and economically strong for the years to come. When it comes to essential services, the services that Tulsans expect from their city, this budget funds the necessary services while also incorporating proposed reductions in spending that were based on input from all of our departments. Given the reality of our financial situation, earlier this year, I asked all departments to identify proposed reductions in the amount of 3% to 4% so that we could prepare this budget in line with those realities. It was a great exercise for departments to look at their mission, core services, while looking at ways we could create further efficiencies and collaborate across departments. The goal from this process was to work together to strike the right balance so we can make needed cuts and maintain the level of service for Tulsans, the ones that they expect and the ones that they deserve. So what we're proposing is $4.2 million in reductions from our non-sworn budgets. This reduction comes from the elimination of 14 full-time vacant positions, with the addition of various other funding reductions of certain administrative services and supplies that have had the least impact on the services we were able to provide residents. When we were going through our department presentation process, I also asked departments to come up with ways to offset our cost of doing business on the revenue side. While some fees have not been adjusted in quite some time, I believe a review is necessary to ensure we are covering the costs of doing business and delivering for citizens. Now, this is not to make money, this is just simply to cover our costs, given the fact that our expenses have risen due to trends in the national economy. Based on department recommendations, this budget includes the potential for $2.6 million in recovery cost efforts, and I look forward to discussing those with you in the coming weeks. This proposal also funds city utility services at adjusted rates approved by the Tulsa Metropolitan Utility Authority and the Tulsa Authority for the Recovery of Energy. I want to thank the members of both authorities for their thoughtful work to balance the need to invest in our infrastructure while also reducing the amount of planned rate increases. As part of these rate adjustments, the typical Tulsa utility customer can expect their bill to increase by about $4.71 a month or on average $56 a year. I hope what's clear in this presentation is that we've made a conscious effort to ensure that essential services continue, and even though we're in a tough budget year, we still are building for the future. We're doing this by providing funding for our street maintenance crews, funding for highway lighting and traffic synchronization, staffing the mayor's office to support our shared major goals in housing, homelessness, public safety, and tribal relations, ensuring the upgrades across the entire park system continue at a time when Tulsa Parks is going through the largest improvements project in their history, reestablishing funding for a deputy city auditor. This budget also ensures we have the ability to keep our pools open, our animals cared for, our code enforcement teams funded, our seasonal day camps operating, and our school crossing guard positions funded. Now, we talked about a lot of things tonight, but when you look at this proposed budget in its entirety, it hits on all of the major goals we set for ourselves at our retreat. On homelessness, this budget funds the implementation of our 3-H Task Force recommendations, including the first phase of the $75 million Improve Our Tulsa 3 funding. It funds dedicated staff to lead on housing and homelessness initiatives, and it provides funding for the transitional living facility, additional temporary transitional housing, and multiple other homelessness initiatives. When it comes to public safety and making Tulsa the safest big city in America, it provides needed funding and resources for Tulsa Animal Services while also allowing us to begin construction on our new animal shelter. It fully funds our police and fire academies. It funds dedicated staff for tribal partnerships. It provides funding for alternative response models in our 911 Mental Health Partnership, and it provides continued work on the capital side for the Public Safety Center, where we will begin to move so much of our public safety operations in just a couple of years. In terms of economic development, this budget funds nearly $60 million over the next four years for wastewater infrastructure for housing and economic development. It provides staffing for a new fast-track permitting process to spur growth and reduce internal regulatory barriers, and it provides funding for the Route 66 Centennial. When it comes to improving youth outcomes, it fully funds the Office of Children, Youth, and Families. It provides funding for the Financial Empowerment Center, and it fully funds our crossing guards for the upcoming school year. This budget I bring to you tonight does all these things while cutting our use of reserve funds for operations in half, an important step toward our work of restoring structural balance in the city's finances. While challenges remain, Tulsa is committed to responsible fiscal management. Got some water? Yeah, that's right. I want to sincerely thank each of you, our counselors, for your dedication, your insight, your continued commitment to serve in our community. I also want to recognize and express again my deep appreciation for our incredible team here at the city, whose hard work and expertise makes everything we do possible. As we move into the months ahead, I look forward to our continued collaboration, open dialogue, and meeting the shared goals of our collective values and priorities. I know any member of our team will be able to answer any questions you have in the coming weeks as we work to finalize this budget, and together, I am confident that we can meet the challenges ahead and build a stronger future for everyone we serve. It is my pleasure to serve as mayor and to partner with each one of you. We have an amazing city, and although we face intense fiscal headwinds, we are still committed to ensuring this city remains focused on winning the next decade. Tonight, I humbly submit this budget for your consideration, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for your time on this and your teams and all of our department heads as well. We look forward to working with you over the next almost two months on getting this read, reviewed, and then hopefully approved as well.
Absolutely. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
So, Item 4C will be read and voted on separately. C, Resolution Approving the 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and Program Year, 2025 Annual Action Plan, and Projected Use of Funds Beginning July 1st, 2025 to be funded by the CDBG Funds, Home Investment Partnership Act, Emergency Solutions Grant Fund, HAPWA authorizing the mayor to submit a final statement and assign all assurances, understandings, and contracts associated with said grants from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I am recusing on this item.
Do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, we have two speakers for Item 4C. Our first speaker is James Alexander Jr.
Good evening, councilors and everyone in the chambers.
Good evening.
I am here on 4C, and once again, I'm gonna tell you, good people, that this money is being misused. For what you're doing would have to take an act of Congress, which has not happened. This money comes here for a special area, and the only area in Tulsa -- yes, it does. Prove me wrong, and I'll sit down and tell you how wrong I've been for 35 years, and I'm not gonna do that, because I know what I'm talking about. Uh, Ms. Harper, this money belongs to an area that you represent. You need to start --
Mr. Alexander, will you please direct all the comments to all of us, not just one counselor?
But she's the counsel that I'm talking to.
Thank you.
Thank you. But listen, this area is District 1. Turn that music off while I'm speaking.
Is that you? Will you please stop the -- whoever's playing the music, please stop. Thank you.
Give my time back.
You've got plenty of time.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harper. Uh, and looking at this group of people that you want to give this money to, and now a dime is going to North Tulsa where the -- you know, North Tulsa is the only one with a package from the government that helps you receive this money. Nowhere else in Tulsa, but yet this money has been spent all over Tulsa for the last -- since I've been coming to the council, about 35 years. And look at North Tulsa. It's a black historical area, Greenwood, that's not historically preserved. You have OSU Tulsa down there. You have OETA and other non-black things, and you're trying to -- the state is trying to get rid of Langston University, the only black university in Tulsa. I mean, in Oklahoma. There's a problem here, and it's looked like racism. It is racism. You don't get rid of a historical anything. I mean, anything historical. And Langston has been attacked ever since I've gone there, and I started this '71, even longer. There's a problem here, and looking at all this funding, uh, you've got the -- that project on 36th Street, Charles Neighborhood, which is funded through CDBG for six years. That's a federal project, which has its own funding. You have Home Delivery, Meals on Wheels, that's funded through something else. Campfire, you have Youth Services, Day Center, Salvation Army, United Way, City of Tulsa with sidewalks, housing initiative, houses demolition, small businesses, East Tulsa Repair. There's all kinds of stuff. Where is North Tulsa? Nowhere. You have a village at Roma Berry. I don't know where that is. You have Housing Center for Housing Solutions. Who is that? Is that a new entity with the Tulsa -- City of Tulsa? Uh, there's just this -- you know what? This money needs to be stopped. If it's not gonna be used for the purpose that it's planned for, it needs to be stopped. And that's my next thing, to stop this funding. You know, like the little boy that had the basketball and everybody played but him? I'm that guy. I tend to stop all this stuff. You know, one thing, another thing is, how is this council gonna sit here and talk about spending people money and not saying anything to them? That is not legal. Mr. Attorney, you need to get this stuff right. You need to tell them that they're misusing this money, the Finance Department, the mayor, and everybody else that has anything to do with the city administration.
Mr. Alexander, you have 30 seconds.
More than enough time. I'm finished. I might talk on something else.
Do we have another speaker?
Good evening, councilors.
Can you please tell me your name, because you're not giving our staff enough time to let me know who's speaking?
I'm Bernice Alexander.
Thank you.
I agree with my husband. We've been working very diligently on behalf of the North Tulsa community that is supposed to benefit from these funds that he's talking about, and it's a battleground. We had to file a complaint with the EPA to get new sewer and drinking water systems over there because raw sewage was coming up in the park, backing up into people's homes, in the streets, in the schools, so we were able to get that done. There were five major streets in that area that had been promised to be restored for over 30 years, and we had to work to get that done. We had to work to get some lots cut that were overgrown in that area. It looked like a war-torn community, and that's what Greenwood was, a war-torn community. So it looked like a continuation of that type of attitude that this council, this local government, has toward that area. But all areas in Tulsa matter, and all people in Tulsa matter. I don't know about you all, but I'm a mother. I have two children, and neither one of those children, as far as I know, chose for me to be their parent or for them to come here as young -- as boys. I have two boys. They're young men now. But to punish a person, we're talking about some racism going on here, and the chair got up and left because he tried to play with that last meeting, and it's not acceptable. North Tulsa is a part of this community. North Tulsa receives federal funds for its development. You all are choosing to take these federal funds and use it for purposes other than North Tulsa. Those 250 new homes that have been over there, that was part of our request too, and also for some homes to be repaired. Now, as a result, and you know, I think about the people recently who were victims of floods and tornadoes, more so in the smaller towns than here in Tulsa, and people whose homes caught on fire. But then I also think about the two homes that this local government stole from my family and all of our possessions in those homes, two cars and a truck. You didn't use fire, and you didn't use water.
Ms. Bernice, can you get back to the agenda item, please?
I'm on the agenda. What I'm saying is that you all are not only neglecting that area with these monies that are being sent here to serve the areas, but you're trying to punish the people who have something to say about this that you're doing. Now, I am a criminal justice major from Langston University and Sam Houston State University Criminal Justice Center in Huntsville, Texas. This is a criminal enterprise that you all have been conducting against that community since Greenwood, and it will stop. Now, we have been working on this situation, like my husband said, for about 30, 35 years. We've got a lot of things done, and we're on the last leg now to stop it, to stop the attack against that area, to stop the attack against that area. Nobody that I know of has chosen to be whatever race you're in, excuse me, and no one has chosen to be whether you're male or female. You didn't make that choice. You didn't even choose your parents, but you punish people because of who they are, and you're stealing from a community that provision has been assigned to. And this has been going on since 1969, '68, in the 60s, and it's time to stop. I don't know who on this council, and I'm gonna send a letter to the attorney, I told him that already, about those comments that were made about two weeks ago. I don't know who on this --
Ms. Bernice, you have 30 seconds left.
Thank you. I don't know who on this council has a heart for all the people that are in this city, but all the people that live in this city matter. Nobody chose what racial group they were gonna be born in. Nobody chose that they were gonna be male or female, but we're all here, and I think we need to be more conscious and more aware of how we treat each other, because it matters how we treat each other.
Ms. Bernice, your time is up. Thank you.
Want to make that clear. It matters how we treat each other.
Yes, it does. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Any other speakers on this item?
We have no more speakers for 4C.
Uh, is there any council discussion?
We've to approve Item 4C.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counsel Gilbert?
Yes.
Counsel Bengal?
Yes.
Counsel Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Harvick?
Yes.
Counsel Archie?
Yes.
Counsel Dutton?
Yes.
Counsel Bellis?
Yes.
Sorry. You tell them I'm a little out of practice.
I know. Come on out.
Nice job. The remaining items, 4D through --
Uh, the remaining items, four D through four A B, will not be read aloud. However, public comments will be received on these items. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we have one speaker, Mr. John Hoffines, for, for T, U, and double A.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, councilors. Mayor's item T, especially event application, B O K Center, May twenty-twenty-five event scheduled for May of twenty-twenty-five. Tamela Mann is scheduled to be here in the, in the Live, Breathe, Fight Tour, and she may sing, "Now Behold the Lamb." And here are some lyrics. "Now behold the lamb, the precious lamb of God, born into sin that I may live again, the precious lamb of God. We praise your name, Jesus. You died, you died for me, Jesus. You shed your blood for me, Jesus, on Calvary." Mayor's item U, a special event application, Carney Fest Twenty-Five, scheduled for May third, twenty-twenty-five, at three oh four South Trenton Avenue. Supporting document, documentation tells us this festival is being hosted by The Church Studio, purchased nineteen seventy-two by Leon Russell. The website tells us the historic church became a recording studio and home office for shelter records in the early nineteen seventies. At the beginning of nineteen fifteen, it started as Grace Methodist Episcopal Church, thank you for the Methodist Lord, and was one of the earliest churches built in our new city. Even later, it survived the race riots, recent, more recently renamed, uh, of nineteen twenty-one. By nineteen twenty-eight, it had become the first United Brethren Church, thanks for them, Lord, and remained, remained so until at least nineteen forty-six. In nineteen forty-eight, it began appearing in city directories as the first evangelical United Brethren Church until nineteen sixty-one, when it was the first church of God. Originally a brick church, their current castle stone was placed in the mid-nineteen fifties. Leon Russell purchased the church in nineteen seventy-two, and The Church Studio was conceived. And just a little information along that line. Mayor's item A A, a special event application, Tulsa Farmer's Market, scheduled for May third, seventh, tenth, fourteenth, seventeenth, twenty-first, twenty-fourth, and on and on, twenty-twenty-five, at One South Lewis Avenue. It's great seeing this delicious and nutritious food being provided for our bodies. I'm grateful to the farmers who make this wholesome food available, and I am also grateful to the good Lord for making wholesome food available for our souls. And as many already know, when we read God's Word, the Holy Bible, our souls are fed and nourished. And thank you, family, for always doing your best to help Tulsa be her best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffines. Any council discussion?
Move to approve items four D through four A B with the emergency clause on four D.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Uh, four D through four A B are approved with the emergency clause on four D. A C is sewer easement closure requested by Jessica Dadger, a property located at three three one one South Truist. Uh, do we have any speakers on this item?
We have no speakers for four A C.
Any council discussion?
Move to deny the sewer easement closure on four A C.
Mr. City Attorney, was that clear enough on that? Okay, please call the roll.
Who said second? I'm sorry.
Oh, Counselor Bellis did.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes. Counselor Hall Harper? Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
All right, this closure was denied. Five authorities, boards, and commissions, a rezoning application, Z seven eight oh eight, from R S three to R M two, for property located west of the northwest corner of West Newton Street and North Union Avenue. Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers for five A.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve item five A.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
All right, five A is approved. B, rezoning application, Z seven seven nine nine, from R S three and A G to O L with optional development plan for property located at the southeast corner of East One Hundred and First Street South and South Florence Avenue. Uh, this is a continued item. Uh, we had already closed public comments, will not be receiving public comment tonight. Uh, do we have any council discussion? Counselor Archie, do you want to?
Sure.
Talk about, um, the efforts that we took between the last meeting and this meeting?
Absolutely. Well, at, at a high level, I just want to say thank you. Uh, I think this, um, this vote and this entire process just represents when developers come together with residents, um, to move forward together, and I want to commend, uh, the Bertatys, the Lombardys, uh, those from Chelsea Pond, and Mr. Nar, everyone that's been involved in the continual discussions and, and, uh, you know, bringing your voices to the table, uh, being willing to compromise, see things from other people's point of view, and, and, um, just want to say thank you and, and, um, want to continue on.
I should maybe ask Mr. Foster to come up and just describe what the final O D P says that we're getting ready to vote on. It's provided in the backup material, but just for clarification for anybody who may be watching, listening, or in attendance.
Sure. Nathan Foster with the planning office. Um, so, we've, we've brought back one version. I think last time we were here, we had two in front of you. So, that version is the result of the additional conversations that were had with the developer and the neighbors, ultimately striking the use category of three households or more on one lot. Um, also striking funeral or mortuary service, which I don't think I mentioned in your committee meeting earlier today, which was something everyone was in agreement with eliminating from the use allowable list. The other regulations that are in here remain similar to what we discussed at your last meeting, some additional setbacks from Florence Avenue, as well as from the southern boundary of the development plan to provide additional buffer area for the neighborhood areas, uh, restrictions on second-story windows for any two-story buildings as it relates to privacy, making sure those windows are either frosted or at a six-foot sill height, enhanced landscaping standards for both that southern and eastern boundary, as well as the area along Florence Avenue, reduced signage, um, requirements around what type of signs they have to be, as well as the overall height, and then finally, some lighting standards that restrict the height of light fixtures within a certain distance of those residential areas as well. All of that, um, will be reviewed for, by our office prior to the issuance of any permits to ensure that the optional development plan standards are met.
Any questions, Mr. Foster, before we let them loose? Counselor Archie?
I also want to, uh, make an acknowledgement to Brandon Ash, also, uh, call that everybody else, but I forgot you, so, much thanks to you as well.
Just out of an, an abundance of caution, we want to make sure that we didn't communicate to anybody, um, in our previous meeting that you would be allowed to speak or, or not. There seems to be some confusion on that. Is there anybody that has signed up to speak?
We have three speakers signed up.
Okay, well, let's call the first speaker then.
Okay. Um, our, our first speaker is Sally Reynolds.
Go ahead, Ms. Reynolds.
Sally Reynolds, thirty-six thirty, East One Hundred and Fourth Street, Chelsea Pond. Uh, thank you to the councilors, thank you to the Lombardys, thank you to the other homeowners, really appreciate it.
Point of order, Chair. Is that like a, without objection, we're going to hear comments again, or?
No, because we communicated during our last meeting evidently that we would take, we would continue to take public comments.
From the same speakers?
Same speakers. That's, that's the.
This is a new one?
Sarah Davis, council staff. I think, I don't know if it was communicated in your meeting, but just in various discussions, because the item changed, um, and there was a discussion around holding a hearing on the O D P, and that wasn't on the agenda last time, that we would allow on this time.
So this is a, a complete, al- almost as if it's a completely new item.
It's definitely a different item than.
Different items. So, yes, I, I've been encouraged to allow the speakers up to their full five minutes. Um, Ms. Reynolds, sorry that we got in, involved in your conversation.
I don't need to speak anymore. Just thank you very much for helping facilitate the process, and thanks to the Lombardys and the homeowners. I think we are all happy with the outcome. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Anthony Bertati.
Anthony Bertati, one oh one one five South College Place in Delaware Point, and I just signed up to speak, just in case there were any changes, but everything from what was said sounds correct, so I'm good. Thank you very much for all your work.
Good. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our last speaker is, uh, Vinton Nar.
Uh, Vinton Nar, uh, one zero two two four South Evanson Place. Uh, ditto on what Tony said, as Jack Nicholson said, this is about as good as it gets. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your cooperation and involvement in this as well. Do we have any council discussion? Would you like to? Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Dutton.
Um, I just have to voice that I'm disappointed that the multifamily, uh, options were removed from this rezoning application, especially in lieu of our housing crisis. I, I guess I'm thinking that it's God's country, from what I hear, that Joseph, Mary, and Jesus wouldn't be welcome in a multifamily household in that particular area. And so that's disappointing to me, but I appreciate all the work that you guys have
Any more council discussion? Would you like to make the motion? Come on, you can do it.
I move to approve, um.
Item five B.
Item five B.
With?
With.
With the O D P.
The O D P as stated.
Backup material.
In the backup material. And distributed.
On Thursday.
On Thursday.
April twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
That's it.
Awesome.
You did it. Second. I'll second. Please call the roll.
You second?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
I'm a no.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
No.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
No.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
No.
Counselor Bellis?
No.
Okay, the item does not pass. It is not rezoned. Item six, first reading, the following items in this section of the agenda will not be read aloud, and without objection, items six A through D will be forwarded to the next council meeting for action, um, except for six B. Uh, seven, ordinances, second reading, A rezoning ordinance, Z seven eight oh seven, from R M two to R S five, for property located at the northeast corner of West Eighth Street South and South Forty-Fifth West Avenue, requested by Mr. Cisneros. Uh, B ordinance amending and correcting, ordinance number two five five zero zero, adopted by the Tulsa Council on January eighth, twenty-twenty-five, and approved by the mayor on January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, closing portions of certain public ways of the city of Tulsa in which the legal description contains Scrivener's errors, correcting the legal description of ordinance number two five five zero zero. C ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget to transfer available appropriations of thirty thousand dollars between projects and account groups within the Emergency Rental Assistance Subfund, and D amending, ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget to transfer available appropriations of seven hundred eighteen thousand one hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty-one cents between projects within the twenty nineteen B Sewer Revenue Bonds Subfund. Do we have any speakers on seven A through D?
We have one speaker, Bernice Alexander, for seven C.
Yeah, there's no time. Any other speakers?
We have no other speakers.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve item seven A through seven D.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Seven A through D are approved, eight council items. A, councilors' announcements and reports on current community events, activities, efforts, and concerns, other than announcements and reports, no discussion will ensue. Counselor Archie?
Yes, just want to invite everyone this coming Monday, five thirty P M, at the West Tulsa Dream Center. Uh, Mayor Nichols and I will be in community conversations, and so, um, come out, everyone from the city will be there at their tables, come with your questions. Um, I'll be speaking, the mayor will be speaking on, on his priorities. I'll be speaking on my own, and, and, um, the, the last few have been wonderful, hundreds of people have come out, so, uh, come and let your voice be heard, and, uh, looking forward to seeing you this coming Monday.
Anyone else? Okay. Uh, B, request for waiver, waiver of administrative fees of three hundred dollars for work completed at three six four South Souness Avenue. Do we have any speakers on that item?
We have no speakers.
Do we need, um, any kind of discussion on this?
Oh, could you say that on the mic? Sorry, we can't hear you down here.
I think the gentleman that's requesting the waiver, I guess you didn't know you needed to sign up, so he's here, and Brandt is here as well, to give us, you know, an outlet of what, what has taken place and what, uh, what he's requesting.
And we can always ask questions of the applicant.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Mr. Pitchford, you want to come up and tell us a little bit about it, and then we'll hear from, uh, the person requesting this waiver.
So this was, uh, Brandt Pitchford Code Enforcement. It's a very standard, uh, summary abatement case. Um, the, uh, I guess he's not the appellant, the requister of the fee waiver, uh, got his proper notice or a reminder, what we call it, um, did what he thought was enough to do, to keep the cleanup from us occurring. Uh, he did show us and prove to us, he texted a five seven six number, which he thought was a cell phone, but that's one of our city landlines, so it never got to the inspector, so that translation got lost. So, uh, myself, Counselor Hall Harper, and him met, uh, with some other staff, and, uh, we, we've agreed to not dispute the fee waiver of three hundred dollars as long as the fee of the abatement cost is still paid.
That's my request.
That's a great summary. Does the applicant even need to speak? You're welcome to.
If you have questions of them.
If you would like, but it seems like things are going pretty well so far. Okay. Thank you. Any more council discussion? Going to make the motion?
Yep. Move to approve the fee waiver on item eight B.
Second.
I heard Counselor Dr. Wright first. Okay, please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Item eight B is approved, and fee is waived. Uh, eight C, travel, uh, we have two councilors recusing, Bush and Hall Harper on these items. Uh, C is a travel authorization for Counselor Hall Harper to travel to Omaha, Nebraska, and D is a travel authorization for Counselor Bush to travel to Midwest City on a city business. Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Do we have any council discussion?
Move to approve item eight C and D.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Eight C through D are approved. There is no new business, hearing of appeals, public comments. We are adjourned. Thank you.